Thank you very much. You may be seated. We will now begin our meeting with having a recognition of our South Carolina SC Ready, perfect scores, and end of course 100s. And this will be done by Ms. Sherri Fraz- Forrest and Mr. Frederick Coines.
Good evening Chairman Moore, members of the board, Dr. Giles, District Administration, esteemed faculty, students, and families. This evening Ms. Forrest and I have the distinct honor of recognizing students who have exceptional, who have achieved exceptional academic success on the 2025 SC Ready test and/or the 2024-25 end of course examinations. For the 2024-25 school year, 14 GCSE students in grades three through eight achieved the highest distinction, a perfect score on SC Ready. Eleven students earned a perfect score in mathematics, four students earned a perfect score in English Language Arts, and two students earned a perfect score in science. In addition, 207 GCSE students achieved a score of 100 on their end of course exams, including 35 students in Algebra I, 53 students in English II, 56 students in Biology I, and 91 students in US History and Constitution. Join us, joining us for tonight's recognitions are our school administrators who will help present the awards. Students will be recognized by the administrator from the school they attend during the 24-25 school year. At this time, I invite board members and superintendent Giles to join us in front of the stage to assist with honoring our students. As they are coming forward, I would like to ask everyone in the audience to remain in the boardroom until the conclusion of tonight's recognitions. After each student is recognized, they will return to the multipurpose room where families may pick them up at the end of the presentation. We will now begin with this evening's recognitions with Waukamaw Elementary School and Principal Ashley Cameron.
Good evening. It is with great pleasure that I recognize one of our former third grade Dolphins who has now moved on to WIS as a fourth grade Gator. Congratulations to Mr. Wright Harden. Wright earned a perfect score on SC Ready math.
Principal Travis Clacka from Waukamaw Intermediate School. Congratulations Waukamaw Elementary again.
Congratulations those students who've received a perfect score from WIS. We'd like to start with Caroline Holly, SC Ready E.L.A. Maverick McKinney, SC Ready Math. Sutton Reed, SC Ready Math. Abby Ratai, SC Ready Math and SC Ready E.L.A. Reeve Zamansky, SC Ready Math. Cameron Taylor, SC Ready Math. And Sloan Wooster with SC Ready Math and SC Ready Science. Congratulations to our students.
Congratulations Waukamaw Intermediate School. Next, Principal Mac Burgess from McDonald Elementary.
Good afternoon. It gives me great pleasure to recognize one of my very own mighty Seagulls, Evelyn Hernandez. She scored a perfect score on an SC Ready Math.
Congratulations McDonald Elementary. Principal Jenny Haynes from Waukamaw Middle School.
Thank you so much. It is with great warrior pride that I recognize these scholars. For Algebra I, EOC Josiah Baker. Algebra I, Grayson Ballard. SC Ready Math, Elrvi Bone. Algebra I, Ella Cahill. Algebra I, Ava Carroll. Algebra I, Cruz Cavietares. Algebra I, Finley Christian. Algebra I, Ainsley Coffey. SC Ready Math, South Crawford. SC Ready E.L.A., Melissa Dukes. Algebra I, Mason De Vorschok. Algebra I, Wells Irvin. Algebra I, Avery Ford. Algebra I, Banks Formo. Algebra I, Lucas Garcia. Algebra I, Nora Groblowski. Algebra I, Joshua Green Adams. Algebra I, Miller Hawley. Algebra I, Anna Kopp. Algebra I, Gianna Lyons. Algebra I, Henry McClary. Algebra I, Addie Nelson. Algebra I, Giovanna Nacastro. Algebra I, Nicholas Papadia. Algebra I, Ashley Parsons. Algebra I, Bodhi Reba. Algebra I, Cruz Spires. Algebra I, and SC Ready E.L.A., Caroline Stewart. SC Ready Math, Edie Lou Strickland. Algebra I, Easton Umberger. Algebra I, Beckett Vaughn. And Algebra I, Noah Watson. Thank you so much.
Congratulations Waukamaw Middle School. Principal Noreen Grant Frazier from Carvers Bay Middle Steam Academy.
Great evening. We bring you great pride from the Bay where great things are always happening. At this time, it is my distinct honor to recognize ELC Algebra I, perfect score, Damian Parsons.
Thank you Carvers Bay Middle Steam Academy. Congratulations. Up next Coastal Montessori Charter School Director Chris Bergeron.
Good evening. It's my pleasure to present former stingray Charlotte Kimball and her perfect score in Algebra I.
Thank you Coastal Montessori Charter School. Congratulations again. Principal Seth Hillman from Georgetown Middle School.
Good evening from Georgetown Middle School. I'd like to congratulate the parents of these students I'm about to call out, their teachers, and then, and you as well. Eliana Howard, perfect score Algebra I. Sadie Mae Morris, Algebra I. And Emery Moyer, perfect score Algebra I.
Congratulations again Georgetown Middle School. Principal David Hamel and Assistant Principal Dr. Brielle Chadwell from Waukamaw High School.
Congratulations to all of our perfect scores for EOCs. We're going to start with Victoria Arts, English II. Murray Barudy, English II. Ray Barrino, US History. Charlotte Beard, Biology I. Grayson Bany, Biology I. Bennett Blair, English II. Zachary Blyer, US History. Presley Bone, Biology I. Dakota Bond, English II. Jackson Bowen, Biology I. Lila Brown, English II. Lilian Bun, English II. Anna Buskirk, English II. Owen Buskirk, Biology I. Ella Pearl Campbell, US History. Marley Caskey, Biology I. Liam Chapman, US History. Jackson Church, US History. Abigail Cohen, US History. Alice Crowe, US History. Daisy Dagel, Biology I. Darla Dagel, Biology I. Lily Danish, Biology I. Lilian Dob, US History. Paul Davidson, English II. Mary Day, US History. Genevieve Donelli, English II. Joseph Duval, US History. Walker Edie, US History. Jacob Ernest, US History. Julia Easterling, Biology I. Hampton Irvin, US History. Tywin Evans, US History. Avery Fleming, Biology I and English II. Anna Formo, Biology I. Banks Fur, Biology I. Brianna Gaspardo, US History. Adrian Gray, US History. Jacob Green, English II. Banks Harden, English II. Sophie Harden, US History. Riley Harris, US History. Noah Height, US History. Hayden Howard, US History. William Howard, US History. Charles Jackson, Biology I. Lila Jennings, US History. Eli Johnson, English II. Hope Johnson, English II. Luke Joyce, Biology I and English II. Lilian Keith, Biology I. Lindsay Kennedy, US History. Mykola Konradenko, Biology I. Philip Kwiatkowski, Biology I. Adeline Lucas, US History. Jamarien Mack, English II and US History. William Martin, US History. Elijah Mason, US History. Samuel McClellan, Biology I. Delaney McKeown, English II. Mackenzie Merritt, English II. Mary Michael, Biology I. David McCalskes, US History. Michael Moleski, US History. Stuart Miller, Biology I. Ainsley Nesbit, US History. Emily Nettles, US History. Frances Oliver, US History. Ashley O'Neal, US History. Charles Paris, English II. Louis Par- oops, sorry. Sorry Charlie. Louis Parsons, US History. Owen Patterson, US History. Gabriel Pearson, Biology I. Noah Penya, Biology I. Natalie Peterson, Biology I. Lucy Phillips, English II. Jaden Poon, Biology I. Hiros Samuel Ramos de la Cruz, Biology I. Lauren Ratz, Biology I. Emerald Roberts, US History. Catherine Robertson, Biology I. Lily Rosnak, US History. Philip Rutherford, English II. Ramatu Sanahori, US History. Emily Sanchez, Biology I. Savannah Sharp, Biology I. Walker Shealy, US History. John Smith, US History. Natalie Space, English II. Harper Steele, English II. Landon Stewart, Biology I. Sidney Stocks, English II. Jasper Strickland, Biology I and English II. Addison Taylor, US History. Joseph Taylor, US History. Miller Taylor, English II. Rosemary Taylor, English II and Algebra I. Roxanne Tipton, Biology I. Rowan Trevathan, US History. Teagan Umberger, US History. Brianna Valdez Loque, US History. Andrew Wallace, US History. Jacob Wilkins, Biology I. Abigail Williams, US History. Grace Williamson, Biology I. Jordan Wright, Biology I. Joshua Wright, Biology I. And Dominic Guianes, US History.
Congratulations again Waukamaw High School. Next, we have Principal Dr. Tashanka Mahone from Andrews High School.
Congratulations to the following students from Andrews High. Chloe Adams, Emily Bratcher. Grace Bratcher. Ellison Braddock for English II. Sophie, Sophie Duval, English II. Sean Jerome, Biology I. Anthony Rosetti Perez, Biology I. Kanari Seawright, US History. Marley Stone, English II.
Thank you Andrews High School. Carvers Bay Early College and Career High School, Mr. Reggie Thompson.
Congratulations to the following students from Carvers Bay Early College and Careers High School. Hayden Allen, Biology I. English II. Lilian Bryant. US History. Chapman Green. Biology I. English II. Josiah Glover. Biology I. English II. Kyla Jackson. English II. Emery Lewis. Biology I. English II. And Markell Myers, Biology I.
Thank you Carvers Bay Early College and Career High School. And our last principal for this evening's recognition is Principal Craig Stone from Georgetown High School.
It's an honor to recognize our 2025 end of course exam perfect scores. Desiree Alarcon, US History. Natalie Alarcon, US History. Riley Ard, US History. Nathan Benton, US History. Judith Berry, Algebra I. And English II. Jamelyn Bullens, US History. Williams Bradham, Biology I. Sarah Cannon, US History. Haley Davis, US History. Jania Davis, Biology I. Quinn Dickinson, US History. Ziva Drayton, English II. Randa Evans, English II. Satcher Phelps, US History. Charlotte Floyd, Biology I. Olivia Frazier, US History. Kelvin Funny, Biology I. Jacob Gier, Biology I and English II. Rebecca Griffith, US History. Dylan Hurl, English II. Jaden Hewitt, US History. Tyler Hewitt, English II. Jaden Huffstettler, English II. William Johnson, English II. Nashawn Kinder, English II. Brian Kenlock, US History. Travis Knox, Biology I and English II. Amon Lewis, US History. Finn Long, US History. George Mathis, US History. Leonard Mitchum, US History. Harper Moore, US History. Jackson Morris, English II. Noah Kate Morris, US History. Nico O'Hara, US History. Christian Ortiz Gonzalez, US History. Demaris Palafax, US History. Philip Palafax, US History. Ayana Palmer, Biology I and English II. Itzel Perezvez Vera, US History. Chloe Phillips, English II. Leila Presley, English II. Zion Reed, Biology I and English II. Jimena Reyes Ariaga, US History. Shaqari Ruffin, US History. Madeline Smith, English II. Seth Trob, Biology I and English II. Chloe Turick, Biology I and English II. LaRon Bereen, US History. And Alec Wilcox, Biology I.
All right, let's give another round of applause to these remarkable students. We also want to take a moment to recognize the incredible teachers who help guide these students to such an outstanding level of achievement. Before calling their names, I would like to share that Dr. Giles personally visited each of these teachers at their schools last week to thank them for their hard work and dedication. If any of these teachers are in attendance this evening, we invite you to stand when your name is called. Jessica Lockney, Waukamaw Elementary. Jessica Mueller, Waukamaw Intermediate. Becky Evans, Waukamaw Intermediate. Jennifer Christian, Waukamaw Intermediate. Nicole Zeller, Waukamaw Intermediate. Michael Lozier, Waukamaw Intermediate. Rennie Geddes, Waukamaw Intermediate. Tammy Moore, McDonald Elementary. Julia Painter, Carvers Bay Early College and Career High School. Dr. William Cox, Georgetown High School. Andrew Gaddy, Georgetown High School. Joseph Lopes, Georgetown High School. Brad Kibler, Waukamaw High School. Chris Hepatius, Waukamaw High School. Julie Humowitz, Waukamaw High School. Jeffrey Brennan, Andrews High School. Michelle Perdom, Georgetown High School. Ellen Woolox, Georgetown High School. Ben Shawan, Waukamaw High School. Brian Buffkin, Waukamaw High School. Lisa Crib, Waukamaw High School. Christina Gray, Carvers Bay Early College and Career High School. Paul Morris, Andrews High School. Yvonne Abrams, Andrews High School. Angelica Hannah, Carvers Bay Early College and Career High School. Next page. Maylin Haleko, Georgetown High School. Barbara O'Neil, Waukamaw High School. Sarah Ratz, Waukamaw High School. Nell Stevenson, Waukamaw High School. Rena Smith, Waukamaw High School. Denise Tompkins, Georgetown High School. Edric Alston, Carvers Bay Middle Steam Academy. Caroline Stalvey, Georgetown High School. Gladys Riculo, Waukamaw High School. Amy Clennard, Georgetown Middle School. Laura Gabriel, Waukamaw Middle School. Melissa Cahill, Waukamaw Middle School. Ronald Miller, Waukamaw Middle School. Stacy Owen B., Waukamaw Middle School. Will Simon, Coastal Montessori School. Congratulations once again to all of our students and teachers. Let's give them a final round of applause for the incredible achievements.
And while you're still here. We ask that you hold on just a second, just a second. We're going to give you a pause, a brief pause. The South Carolina School Boards Association's Boardship Institute offers a year-round training curriculum focused on leadership skills for board members on state and national issues. Workshops focus on school law, advocacy, improving board operations, and leadership for improving student achievement. Points are accrued annually for participating in statewide conferences and onsite training in our district. Board members are recognized for reaching each of six levels with the highest recognition being Level 6. The following members are recognized tonight. Kathy Anderson, Level 3. And Fallon Boardner, Level 1. Thank you for all the recognitions. Now is the intermission if you need to. But you're welcome to remain.
Very nice.
Lots of kids.
Always good to see kids.
Absolutely. Me too.
I'm gone.
Hittos, Miss Ma'am. Those are special, special.
That's the best part of board meetings.
Oh, hey.
It is so nice to meet you. We are related.
What's in this? Lots of my theater means.
Well, I'm going to take it. One.
Somebody go take it. But I don't see it up here, so.
I was talking to Ruthie earlier.
That's awesome.
Part of my national board when I did National Board 100 years ago. On average, they're just SAT scores are 60 points higher than the scores in the country because they were in, they were either singing, dancing, theater.
Yep.
That one is yours.
That one is yours. This one is mine, but I brought my own because I'm gonna need some caffeine.
4:30 was very early this morning.
You're not my friend anymore.
I'm getting up to them and I have to wake the dogs up to put them out. They're like, are you crazy?
Yeah, a little much. Give it a little much. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Workout on me.
Okay, let's see here.
That's a kind of a workout on me.
Yeah. The best part of... I'm tired.
We had a whole...
I know.
I'm gonna take a bathroom. That's what I'm gonna do. Just to make sure.
How long is our meeting here?
It's took me a year. If he doesn't run from the side, then he's certainly not running. I feel the worst part, I mean, if he doesn't win that one, he's not running here, and we lose him.
The teacher condensed from Andrews.
You can hang out, you can meet my kids. Fuck you, do something. Good meeting you.
Thank everyone for your attendance here tonight. We're gonna move along with our meeting. We're now down to the public comment section of the meeting tonight. The entire public comment period is generally limited to 30 minutes. Comments or requests should be brief and as to the point as possible and shall not exceed three minutes. Speakers may offer constructive criticism of schools' operation and programs. However, the board will not hear complaints about specific school personnel or students. Those complaints should be brought to the appropriate supervisor, personnel, or board members privately. Further, persons commenting on the members of the audience, commenting from the members of the audience must remain civil and respectful at all times. Anyone violating these guidelines may be asked to leave the meeting. With that being said, we will proceed, and we have one card this afternoon, and that's Mr. Felicia Cooper, apparent.
Good evening, thank you all for having me. I want to just make a concern known. For the past couple, well, let's say last year and this year, we've had some students that have come to the school and made some threats, and thankfully, nothing has come to fruition with those threats. But the problem we have, or I have, is that we're hearing about a lot of this in the newspaper before we get ever any notification from the district or the school itself. That's not fair to us as parents. That is not fair to the students who are in that school, and that's definitely not fair to the personnel at that school. In Virginia, there was a case where a teacher was shot by a six-year-old, and the administrator at that school was held accountable for that shooting for not acting appropriately to make sure that didn't take place despite concerns being made that that student had a weapon at the school. Parents should not be able to read about incidents at schools from a local social media newspaper before we are being made aware of that incident by the school and the district. There were emails that were sent, but some parents got them, some parents didn't. This is a squeaky wheel that needs some oil ASAP. We shouldn't have to react when something does happen, when you are aware of the kinks in the chain now before something has to. Make us partners. You said that we're partners. The school district consists of parents first, we vote you in. It consists of the students next, because we don't need a school if we don't have children. Don't make this an issue. Make this a priority so that in the future, Gab News doesn't have to be our resource. The district is, and we can trust the district, because the least you could do is tell the parents, hey, we have an issue, and we're resolving that issue, everyone is safe, your child is safe, please trust us and trust the process. And then, after you've resolved the issue, send out an email that says, parents, thank you for your concern, thank you for trusting us, we've resolved the issue, and there's no further need for concern. That's respect, and that's no more than we deserve, and that's no more than you should try to strive for. We're a good school district. We have beautiful schools and beautiful children, and thank God, even better administration. But what we do need is for you to address the squeaky wheel and make sure that you do it swiftly so that we don't have to revisit a Gab News notification again. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Cooper. We certainly share your concern. Thank you very much. Next, we move now to the approval of our minutes from November 4th, 2025. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposers? Thank you very much, motion carries. Now we will adopt the agenda for tonight's meeting. Can I get a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposers? Thank you very much, the agenda is adopted. Now we move to our information items, starting with Ms. Lisa Johnson, First Quarter One, Quarter One Finance Report.
Good evening, Chairman Moore, board members, and Dr. Giles. I'm presenting tonight the General Fund Financial Statement for the First Quarter, which ended September 30th, 2025. And you should have a copy in your information. Revenues received of about $12.1 million are about 9.7% of our budgeted revenues, which actually tracks very close to last year at this time. Property tax relief, Tier 3, doesn't start coming in until October, and Tier 2 until November, so those will all be coming in in the next quarter. Our tax collections, the bills have gone out, at least I've received ours, and they, tax collections, which should be a lot heavier in the November, December, and January months. Expenditures are at 19.3% of the budget at September 30th, 25. That also tracks very closely with where we were at this time last year. The salaries and benefits will get larger as we go, and because of the teachers getting summer payrolls, those will be coming in actually at the end of the year. You have any questions, or can I answer anything?
I do. Is that on everything? I just had a question. Back in July, you presented a really great workshop on the budget and how things flow in and out. You mentioned there were four different buckets, and one was the General Fund, which was operations.
Yes, sir.
There was the Special Revenue Fund, and then there was the Capital Projects Fund and the Debt Service Fund. I'm just trying to get, is the, is the Special Projects Fund the same as the Special Revenue Fund? Is it just a different name?
Yes, sir. It's grants.
Okay. And the two other funds that we haven't talked about tonight, the Capital Project Fund and the Debt Service Fund, are they not there for a specific reason, or do we get a report on those later?
We can get a report at any point for you, if, if that's what the board wishes.
I was just curious why they weren't there.
They're not included in the General Fund budget nor the Special Revenue, so they would be, would require a separate financial report.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Anything else? Mr. Jim Griffin is with us tonight, and he's gonna give you an update on Special Revenue or Special Projects Fund financials.
Good evening, Dr. Giles, Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
Good evening.
As Ms. Johnson mentioned, my name is Jim Griffin, and I will be giving a condensed financial report on our Special Revenue Funds for the district for the three months ended September 30th, 2025. Including in your board package and up on the screen, you'll see that we have total revenues over this three-month period of about $5.8 million, that's our actual revenues. We have total actual expenses of about $4.6 million. Therefore, we have an increase in our net fund balance through three months of about $1.2 million, so we're in pretty good shape. You'll also note that we have some pretty, pretty sizable actual to budget balances, budget to actual balances, both in our revenues and in our expenses, and that's due primarily to the fact that it's still early in the year, and our budget balances include carryover budgets from previous years. We have our fiscal year '23, '24 balances, unused balances that have carried over. We have our fiscal year '24, '25 balances that have carried over, and some of our budget line items actually have full budget, budget budgets for those programs for the entire fiscal year '25, '26. And when you compare that to the actual revenues and expenses, they only reflect the actual revenues and expenses for the three-month period. So that's why you see larger balances in the beginning of the year, but as the time, as the year progresses, we'll start spending those monies down throughout the year. In fact, our '23, '24 carryovers, we did our claims as of September 30th to expire all of those balances through the first three months. So, like I said, we're in pretty good shape through three months, and if, if there's no immediate questions, I'll transition over to our federal funding update.
Any question? Thank you very much, Mr. Griffin.
Okay. And the first portion of our federal funding update that I'd like to talk about is the, the update on our claim process. Now, I am the representative in business services that initiates the claims for the district, especially the federal claims. And so, you'll see up on our board that we have collected approximately $1.1 million in federal funds through the first three months of the year. And I'm proud to say, and I'm pleased to say, that 100% of our claims that we, 100% of the claims that I initiated through the first three months have been fully funded, and in fact, they were fully funded within three weeks of initiating the claim. Now, that's very good and is very consistent with what has been happening over the prior year, so we have not had a negative impact on our claims process through the first three, three months of the year. We also have received notifications for all of our '25, '26 budget allocations for our federal programs, and we've also received notifications that our grant award notices are in the final phases of approval at the state level. Once they are approved, they'll be sent down to the district, they'll be executed by Dr. Giles and Lisa Johnson, and then we'll return them back to the state. What that will do then, initiate the process of uploading our fiscal year '25, '26 budgets in the Grant Approval Processing System, which is called GAPS, and that will allow us to start claiming our fiscal year '25, '26 expenditures retroactively back from July of 2025, 2025. So all in all, we are in good shape, not only with the collections, but the timing and turnaround of our claims. And so that completes my portion of the federal funding update. Are there any questions?
I don't have a question per se, but it is sort of, I guess, a statement based off of what you've already said. To me, I think this should alleviate some concern that we've had with the differences with the federal, what's been going on with the government system, and the fears that we had that we were going to have delayed funding, so I'm really glad to hear this on this aspect. I think it, it alleviates a lot of concern that was there.
Sure.
So I thank you for presenting this. I think you eased a lot of minds with this presentation.
Thank you so much, I really appreciate it. I think I'm turning it over to Mrs. Watford now.
Mr. Griffin, before then, just one quick question as far as the, the last thing you were talking about as far as getting all that uploaded and, and making those, or getting the reimbursement for the expenditures for the '25, '26. Do we have just a, a guess or a timeline on how long that will be before that's completed?
Yes, that's a great question. We've been told that this process should be completed towards the end of the second quarter, and so we're, we're anticipating that we'll be able to do it maybe during the end of the second quarter, the beginning of the third quarter, but I'm, I'm certain we'll keep you notified if there's any unreasonable delays on that.
Okay. So, but no, no problems that we were seeing with that process at all?
Not from all the information that's been communicated to the district.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin.
Good evening, Chairman Moore, board members, and Dr. Giles. I'm here this evening to provide an overview of our federal funding allocations for this year and how these funds will support students, staff, and schools across the district. Our Title I allocation for this year is $2,806,000, which is a decrease of $227,000 from the previous year. The purpose of this funding is to continue to support our highest need schools by providing salaries for reduced class size teachers, interventionist, instructional coaches, parent liaisons, parent instructional supplies, site license for instructional programs, foster care and McKinney-Vento, professional development, and services for participating private schools and indirect cost. These investments directly support student achievement and family engagement. Our allocation for Title II for this year is $381,000, which is a decrease of 38, around $38,000. Title II focuses on teacher quality and educator support, and it includes salary and benefits for a reduced class size teacher, professional development, services for private schools, and coastal Montessori and indirect cost. Our Title III allocation for this year is approximately $30,000, which is a decrease of $591 from last year. Title III supports our multilingual learners by providing after-school and summer tutoring, site license for language support programs, professional development for teachers, academic and parenting supplies, and indirect cost. And finally, our Title IV allocation is $223,000, which is a decrease of approximately $25,000 from last year. Our Title IV supports a well-rounded and safe learning environment through well-rounded educational opportunities, safe and healthy schools initiatives, effective use of technology, also services for private schools and indirect cost. Across all federal programs, each allocation reflects a slight decrease from the previous year. Despite these reductions, we remain committed to strategically using these federal funds to enhance teaching, learning, student support, and family engagement. Thank you for your time and continued support of our students and staff.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Just briefly, do we have an understanding of why we've got the decreases that we've got on those Title II, Title III, and Title IV?
Just with federal funding across, across the United States, there's been a decrease in those funds this year.
So it's not specific to our school district?
It's not specific, no, sir.
Targeted across the board?
That's correct. It's not specific to Georgetown County School District. Yes, sir. All right, thank you. At this time, I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Green.
Thank you very much, Ms. Watford.
Good evening, Chairman Moore, board members, and Dr. Giles. I will be speaking tonight on federal funding in reference to IDEA. As you know, these funds specifically supports our students with disabilities in our county. If you look at our child count, our numbers are increasing. However, in reference to our funding, it is said that our funding will remain the same or might be a slight decrease in the next year. With our federal funding, last year, we received, in reference to our preschool grant, we received 65, a little over 65,000. This year, we do have a slight decrease in our preschool funding. That funding supports our students in, who begins in ages three through five. We support students in our public schools as well as our private schools because it is regulated and mandated by IDEA. In reference to our preschool, we support teachers, instructional assistants, and our child find school psychologists, so those funds help support those needs in that program. With our IDEA... With our IDEA 611 grant, that mainly supports our students who are public school K through 12, even some of our students in adult education. With those monies, if you see, last year, we had a little over 2.4. We do have a slight decrease of a little over $64,000. With those funds, we do support teachers in our program. We have, we support over 32 teachers, instructional assistants. It also, that money also supports our autism support teachers and program. We also pay for other mandated positions we need such as occupational therapy as well as some very temporary employees. We also support our charter schools because we are still supporting our students with disabilities, whether in public school or a private school. And that's just a small snippet of our IDEA funding.
I do have a question. So, am I, did I hear correctly that our student count is increasing, but our funding is decreasing?
That's correct.
And that all of this funding is supposed to go to pay for all of the occupational therapy, speech therapy?
This grant is only supposed to be supplant, it does not cover all of the, all of our expenses. It's supposed to just support the needs.
Support the needs.
Because all our students are Gen S students first, and so, this money should just be supporting what the district, what the state provides for our students.
This is sort of an addition.
Yes, it is.
So, we carry the majority of the burden, and this is assistance?
Yes.
What, I'm sorry, one more question. What is the percentage of assistance that we're actually receiving?
For?
Considering the output that we do for special education, and then the assistance that we receive, and I know this is, I don't expect an actual answer, but maybe in the future.
Okay.
This has sprung on you, but I would be interested in finding out more information on what type of funding our school district needs to help support special education. Anything that we have, you know, I think it's important to understand how much we're spending out, how much we're actually receiving from our federal government and from funding from the state. That's something that I would be interested in learning more about.
Okay. Ms. Boardner, so what will be happening in the coming weeks? Ms. Johnson, along with our team, entire team, as we prepare for the budget, these are important notes to remember. Also, our discussion today alone, we were discussing how increasing AEA's other temporary positions is impacting not just this funding, but it's important to remember, this funding does not provide 100% of our needs. So, then, we're dipping into our local or the general bucket, as you referenced, Mr. DeBose, to balance out our expenses. So, as there are things that we desire that may be on the wants list, much of our needs are having to be covered due to a lack of not just federal funding, but even our state to aid to classroom and other funding sources. And the last thing I'll note is that as our enrollment trend is decreasing, even if it's by a 100 margin, that significantly impacts what we're able to do. So, that is important to go in and start hearing that conversation now that we have several wants. We want to support our teachers as well as our students and staff members, but we are limited in what we're able to do financially. But that will be coming soon in the next weeks as we prepare budget time.
I just wanted to, it sounds like you were asking for the ratio is what we're looking at as far as what we're providing versus what that support looks like. Is that fair?
Basically, it was a curiosity because I was looking into, I think, what is it? If I read correctly, they, the federal government says that they'll help with about 40%, but we don't actually get 40% of the cost. So, that's why I was curious. And I was thinking, you know, if a child with autism requires about $37,000 in additional costs, but we're only receiving $2,500 from federal government, and we're having the increase in autism diagnosis. Trump said 1 in 36, so as we are getting more children that have special needs, but our funding is decreasing, then to me, that's a huge concern. And that's something that, as a district, we kind of just need to be prepared and plan ahead to try and deal with that.
Exactly. That's one of the things we'll bring forth as far as how can we monitor AEA's and other expenses, contracted services? How can we bring those on to our salaries and payrolls versus paying expensive contractual matters? But sometimes, these things are needs, and we are ending up incurring or incurring that cost.
And being that we're in between two larger districts, it puts more of a burden on our district to try to compete with the income that they have versus us.
Correct.
One of our last year's large expenditures in our additional budget, if we recall when we did last year's budget, one of the very large expenditures was to meet the needs that were required. Am I not right, Dr. Green?
You're correct because our numbers increased drastically. And as you stated before, autism was one of our largest growing groups. And so, having to meet those needs, because when you're looking at students or classrooms that we need to provide, that we need to provide services in, you're not looking at a teacher, you're also looking at an assistant. And depending on their level, you may also need to look at whether we need to employ another ABA therapist, BCBA. So, all of those things affect our budget line when we're trying to educate sometimes one student.
That's really important to note that we do have, all children are ours first and then the extras. And so, our regular budget that we approve includes for all children. And this is like Title I money for our students. This is extra money for our special needs children. So, thank you. That's really good to know as we start looking at next year's budget.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Green, Dr. Green. Now, we move down to sole source and emergency procurement summary for the fiscal year 24, 25 by Mrs. Vicki Williams.
Good evening, Chairman Moore, board members, and Dr. Giles. I'd like to report to you tonight about the sole source and emergency procurement reports for last year, fiscal year 24, 25, and also the MBE reports. All right. The first one is the sole source. And as you can see, we've got quite a few sole sources this year. It increased from last year. The total encumbrance was $3,421,660. We actually spent $2,700,880. The reason for the increase, I feel, is because of the federal monies. We were not able to use exemptions like we were used to doing in the past. And most of these are a lot of professional development that is used by our grants department, our federal monies. So, that's the reason for such an increase in that. The next one is the emergency procurement. We encumbered $94,271, and we actually spent $92,130. We didn't have, but one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, nine emergencies for one year. And that's not too bad. That's all for the sole source and procurement. And on the minority business report, we spent a total of $89,530 out of an expenditure of $22,210,000. That was only 0.4%. We had one state-certified vendor, and that was the flooring connection. Is there any questions?
I have one question.
Okay.
Well, I was looking at this. All of these look like they basically fit. I just had one question about the kitchen equipment repairs at the various schools. It's underneath Whaley Food Service, 7/25/24 is the date.
Page five. Are you looking at the sole source?
It is, yes, ma'am. It is under, I believe, page five, towards the bottom.
The next to last on that page. United Refrigeration. Is that the one you're looking at?
The, it looks like the vendor is Whaley Food Service, Craig Evans. The date is 7/25/24, kitchen equipment repairs at various schools.
I see it. That, I forget the name of the equipment, but it's sole proprietor, and they don't allow anybody else to work on their equipment. So, when that happens, we have to sole source it.
I understand. Thank you.
I actually have a question about the rental at Carver's Bay Middle under your emergency.
Oh, emergency, okay. Oh, for the freezer?
Yes, ma'am.
One of our freezers went out, and we had one ordered, but it was not going to get here in time to save all the food. So, we had to rent one until the other one got here, the new one.
Thank you very much.
Any more questions? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Williams. Renounce to Georgetown County School District Surplus Sale Summary fiscal year 24, 25. Ms. Crystal McCracken.
Good evening, Chairman Moore, board members, Dr. Giles. The district conducts all surplus sales through the GovDills Internet Auction site with the exception of electronic devices. Those devices that potentially contain sensitive data are sent to an electronic recycler that is competitively bid by the state and vetted by our IT department. You have been provided a copy of our surplus sale summary for 24, 25. Our sales total $22,956.89. If you don't have any questions?
Any questions?
Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Next, we have the district and school report card. Ms. Forrest and Ms. Barronau.
Dr. Barronau is not able to be with us tonight, so Ms. Forrest will present on her behalf.
And I apologize ahead of time. All right. So, the purpose of our South Carolina school report card is to provide families, educators, and the community with a snapshot of how schools are performing, including data on our test performance, our graduation rates, and college and career readiness. They serve as an accountability measure to help identify strengths and weaknesses and provide a roadmap towards the state's goals for student success. So, it is a data point in time that helps to inform where our kids are at, what they're doing well with, and where we can move in the future. So, what are the ratings for our South Carolina report card? For elementary and middle, you'll see on the left-hand side the indicators that they're measured on, and on the right-hand side, the points that are assigned. The points add up to 100, and they are measured by academic achievement, preparing for success, student progress, multilingual learners' progress, and school climate. The two that are, have the heaviest points would be our academic achievement and our student progress. As we move into high schools, you'll see some similarities and some nuances. Again, out of 100 points, we are looking at graduation rate, college and/or career readiness, or CCR, academic achievement, preparing for success, high school student success, multilingual learner progress, and school climate. So, for this, our heaviest weight is under our academic achievement for 25 points. And then, the next two that are equal weight are college and career at 19 and our graduation rate for 19. And so, we look at the progression of our students as pre-K all the way to 12th graders. And so, when we start with our kindergartners, our kindergartners and first graders, we are looking for that readiness. Are they ready to move forward in their academics? And so, for kindergarten, the kindergarten readiness assessment is administered once a year during the first 45 days of each school year to all of our 5K students. So, it allows teachers to know how ready kids are and where to be able to meet their needs as they move forward in the year. For our first and second graders, we look at readiness using our I-Ready assessment. And so, that you'll see second grade students, the first one is on track for ELA for third grade. Second grade students are on track in math for third grade. And then, you'll look at first grade that are on track in ELA to move to second grade and first grade who are on track in math. And if you'll notice that our students are stronger and more prepared than the percentage statewide, so we do celebrate that. And then, if you notice, there's a slight dip in our second grade. And so, this really truly aligns to Dr. Giles' initiative of the 212 Literacy Initiative. And so, hoping to help close that gap a little bit, which will make our third grader stronger. And for each grade that our students are stronger, they'll be more successful and more apt to graduate. All right. So, under those buckets I talked about earlier, we have the academic achievement. This data was shared with you previously. This is our SC Ready and our EOC data. But this data is used as a component of our school, or yeah, our school and state report card. Preparing for success, this is our science data. And so, for the SC Ready science, this is our fourth and sixth graders that take this assessment. You'll also see our end-of-course data for biology and U.S. history and the Constitution. And as was celebrated this evening, we have quite a few students with perfect scores in these categories, so very exciting. Another component is our multilingual learners' progress. So, the outcomes for this category are based solely on our multilingual learner-student outcomes, which is on the WIDA State Assessment. So, that assessment lets us know how students are progressing. You can see on the left-hand side, students in the ML subgroup who met progress toward proficiency target, and then, students in the ML subgroup who achieved English language level proficiency. And you'll see we're pretty close to the state on the second piece. Our graduation rate, we have increased every year, which we're celebrating. And we are two points higher than the state average. So, for their, for overall graduation rate, we're excited. And we are pushing this year to reach at least 90. We'd like to see the 9-0 in there. And so, that's, we're going to strive and achieve that one. So, our next two slides, what I'm going to share with you is under progress. And so, with progress is how students are growing throughout. So, we look at how students are showing progress based on other students in the state, but we also look as their, for them, if I'm a fifth grader, have I had at least a year's worth of growth when I go to sixth grade, and so on and so on? And so part of this, as we look at as a district, and I'll share both slides, is we look at this as how are students doing every year in a grade level, a third grade, a seventh grade, but also how students matriculate through. So are students growing every year from fourth grade to fifth grade to sixth grade? So we use that data as a district and then our schools dive into that data for their individual schools as well. High school has a few additional pieces that we look at for on-track. And so you'll see overall ninth through eleventh grade are on-track. At the district level is just above our state. The next one, percentage of first-year students on-track, that's our ninth graders. Then we look at our tenth graders, percentage of second-year students on-track. And then finally, our percentage of third-year students on-track. And so if you look at our eleventh graders from last year, they are our current seniors this year. And so looking at those data and making sure that we support those students to make sure that they have everything they need to be on-track to be able to graduate on time. We also have the five-year student success rate that you'll see, we are just above the state on as well. College and career readiness, students in the graduation cohort who are college or career ready. And then students in the graduation cohort who are college and career ready. One is or, one is and. And then you'll see those separated out, students in the graduation cohort who are college-ready, students in this cohort that are career-ready. So it's the career-ready assessment, it's our AP, we look at SATs, ACTs. All of that would fall into this piece. Another component that is measured on our school report cards is climate. And again, sometimes we want, we need to make sure that that climate is strong and students feel safe and families feel safe and teachers feel safe and secure in order to learn. And when those two come together, we, we see some great success. So our climate overall, you'll see surveys go out to teachers, students, and parents. We had an increase last year in parent participation, really working hard to make sure we reach out to our parents. Students, they're in the schools, it's easier to get them to complete the surveys. It is a long survey, so making sure that we get their overall perspective. So if you look at, we measure percent satisfied with learning environment, percent satisfied with social and physical environment, and then percent satisfied with school-home relations. And those, again, are all given to our teachers, students, and parents. So as a whole, where did we kind of fall across, across these ratings? So if you look at from excellent all the way to unsatisfactory, we have just over seventy percent of our schools fall in that average and above all the way to excellent with three of our schools scoring overall excellent. Here's a breakdown of those schools and in the category that they were rated, this is overall. And then under each of those buckets that we talked about earlier, they're also given a score. And so for that, we're, we're going to kind of go into where that would be. So if you look at schools that are on the cusp of just moving up to that next level, these are the schools that are less than two points from achieving their next rating. So two schools are one point five points away from going from average to good. We have one school that's a half a point away from below average to average and a school that's one point five points away from going from unsatisfactory to below average. Many of our schools have shown growth across the board and sometimes growing through a rating that you're at, you're growing, but you may not have just made it over that little, that little bump. So here's these schools and they just need a little bit to be able to, to move to that next rating. So let's celebrate, so we have lots of celebrations. We have two schools that improved in overall rating from below average to average. So that's the overall, not just the, the buckets. Three schools maintained an overall rating of excellent. So once you're excellent, there's nothing to get past there. So it's, it's hard to maintain, you got to make sure that you did what you did before and a little bit more to make sure you maintain at that excellent. Schools that increased in the individual categories, so those individual categories that I shared with you in the previous slides, these are the schools that were able to grow within. So we have where some moved within one of the categories and then we have some that moved all the way to four different categories that they increased. Two schools maintained excellent ratings in two individual categories. And then four schools maintained excellent ratings in one individual category. So lots of celebrations, yay. Let me just turn around here, yay, yay, there we go. They're here. Schools that are identified by the state as underperforming, you'll see any school that was rated below average or unsatisfactory by the state is listed as underperforming. And so what we do as, as a district of support is we look at our strategic plan and we align support specific to the needs of our schools that need that additional support. We've also been working closely with all of our schools, but each of these schools as well is already in the middle or finalizing their forty-five day short-term action plan. So they take their strategic plan and take an area of focus that they're really going to dive deeply into for forty-five days. They progress monitor what that work is and then they collect the data. And then based on that data, they can see if they're on an upward trend with what they're trying to work on or if they need to tweak something. So they're not implementing a strategic plan and at the end of the year saying it didn't work, right? So these are forty-five day plans, which directly aligns with what the state is asking of our schools that are in, in this list. So they're already ahead of the game with the forty-five day plans. Each of our schools will then do a forty-five day data review with their leadership team and our team and just really going through that data and having thought partners about, okay, this is what it's saying and where can we move forward? They will then start a new forty-five day plan come January. So what are some of our district-wide opportunities? What are we working on already and what are some next steps for us? We've been working on building capacity with our school-based leadership teams. They've been doing a great job with this. We have shared with them what a highly effective leadership team would be and they have a rubric. They've self-assessed, they've worked with their teams, they videotaped their leadership teams and have really been able to dive into those areas that they want to improve as individual schools with their teams. Again, I've already shared the forty-five day progress monitoring through our short-term action plans. We're developing instructional leaders in schools and we are going to have our leadership development groups, our, our launch of our aspiring leaders in January. And then we provide differentiated support. And so not every school, just as every child doesn't need the same thing, they need that individual support. We differentiate and provide individual support to each of our schools. Our next big focus is on tier-one instruction. So based on our data and our digging into that data, we know we need to focus on tier-one instruction. The stronger your tier-one instruction is, the, the better outcomes you're going to have for all kids, which reduces the number of students that would need tier-two and tier-three. So looking at professional learning opportunities, we've already provided some of that and that will be ongoing throughout the year. We're really focused on our PLC or collaborative planning pieces, really focused on teaching the standards and using the district-provided resources as opposed to pulling and every school doing something different. Data-driven decision-making, anything that we do as a district or our schools do is always based on data, not a feeling, but what does the data tell us? Instructional coachings, we're building capacity with our district team to be able to coach as well as our principals, assistant principals, and instructional coaches. And then the Superintendent's Two Twelve Literacy Initiative has taken off and that, that's our, some of our favorite times on those days that we have those second-grade teachers in. They came in the first session kind of quiet, like, okay, what do you, what are you thinking we're doing? To now they're like, we need a full day to be able to plan. And they are just, they are amazing, it's an amazing team. And so we've been blessed to be able to work with them. Any questions?
I don't have a question, but I just want to make a comment. First of all, I want to thank you and the whole team because it's hard. Teaching is hard, coaching is hard, and our students deserve the best we have. And we have the best in Georgetown County. And I'm saying that from the people I know out there, some of our, the people who are here right now. And that, we can attest to that by the students we had here tonight and the ones who couldn't make it tonight and all of those. The EOCs are hard, y'all, they, they are, okay? And we're getting those kids there. So thank you for everything you're doing and a lot, a few of this data. And we're close and, and some of it, the things that we look better than the state, even if it's just that little tiny bit.
We'll take it.
We'll take it. I mean, you know, you can win a football game by one point. So anyway, I just wanted to thank you and I'm going to be quiet now. I'm getting excited, I'm sorry.
I was just going to say, there's, there's some good things in here. There's some things to be excited about, there's some things to be celebrated. Obviously, we've got some work to do in some areas. You know, and, and I know that every school is different. Totally get that. But our, based on our review of the data, have we seen a trend that it's stuck out to us of, hey, this is something that we district-wide need to focus on as opposed to each individual school?
I, I would say as a whole, like if you looked at the trend, it's, it's in that tier-one instruction. And so it's not to say teachers haven't been teaching tier-one, they have been. But you can go to four different schools and it would look different in four different places. So I think part of the work that we're doing is kind of norming across, not making, you know, carbon copies of everybody, but being able to teach the state standards to the depth that the standards are written is really important. So anytime we water down a standard by either lowering the complexity of a text or a task, we, we will not reach proficiency if we stay below grade level. So we're really focusing on teaching of the standards and making sure that we teach at the level that they're written for that grade level and then using the district resources in order to do that as opposed to pulling from so many different things. There are times that they might need to pull an additional resource, but we've been working closely with our instructional coaches, the best way to do that and the best resources to do that, so that what's in front of the student is the most rigorous and the best aligned to the standard as possible.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
One quick question, do we know if the state's standards have been watered down at all?
So this is my third state, you're welcome. Okay, sorry, you know. And no, they have not been. So what, what is important is that when states look at the standards that they have and be able to, to determine where students are, if anything, they have increased, maybe in complexity, so I'll give you an example. I taught first grade for one year, just one year, one year. It's, it's, first grade teachers need to get paid a lot, I'm like, whoo, this is the thing. But what I taught when I was a first-grade teacher is what my daughter teaches as a kindergarten teacher. So as the standards change developmentally, children didn't change, right? But the expectation has changed. And so what her kindergartners are doing is, is the same. So if anything, they have increased the level of rigor as opposed to watered down.
That's good news.
Yeah.
I think one of the points, just to add, a point of emphasis that we need to realize is that while the standards have not changed, the levels and the skills of our students have been impacted by various things. Most importantly, or most recently, the pandemic. When you factor in other things within society, within the homes and their readiness, that kindergarten readiness, that has impacted the skill level. So what I find that our teachers have been doing, and it's not a fault of teachers or administrators, but we're steadily trying to close the achievement gap or the skill gaps. So as we've been trying to do that, that's what has caused, maybe not necessarily the teaching to the standard that needs to happen. So hopefully now that we have this momentum built, we can now do the work that Ms. Forrest is referencing.
That's helpful, thank you.
I think also there's a situation where for a while we looked at the bottom twenty percent and so we were trying to close that gap and it got greater when we had the pandemic. And I think then we kind of forgot that we were pushing up. And now I think we have looked at that and we know every child, when you push up, they're going to gain. And I think, I really applaud that, I, the presentation was spot-on. I think we have moved past that and are now moving to pushing up all children to the standard. And I think the resources and kind of leveling those is very important. So I applaud that effort.
And I'd just like to echo some of what else has already been said is that I'm very grateful for the work that you guys are doing. I like the teacher, Ms. Kathy, said, and she should know it better than any one of us up here because she's in the classroom, that it is a hard job. It's a hard job and I recognize that, I've worked out there with the kids and it's a hard job. But it's a job that's necessary. I would like to see this board be more supportive of the academics of the responsibilities of the district versus being concerned on a certain business aspect of it. Because when we talk about budgets, I want it to be an academic-heavy budget because that's what's most important. Our kids are not going to succeed if they don't get educated. So Dr. Giles, just moving forward, just understand that when the budget is starting to be worked on, I'm looking for a heavy academic budget because that is very important. I commend you guys on the work that you're doing and I'm just praying to continue to see the growth because I won't be satisfied until I see all of our schools are at least at average. That's just my goal.
And our, and our, our leaders have been doing a great job. You know, we're, we're in there with them. I just met with a, a team of teachers today and they're just, you know, open and, you know, their scores are pretty good, this, this particular group. And they're like, okay, what do you got, let's see it. And you know, so being very open to new ideas. You know, we're, we're blessed to be able to work with wonderful professionals, so.
Yes, and, and again, just ending on this right here. We're going to get better by either adding or subtracting, whatever it takes for us to see our kids succeed, that's what we're going to be expecting. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's your math note?
It was.
Okay, Ms. Kibler, in naming of school policy information discussion.
As Ms. Kibler comes forth to our board, a few weeks ago, Ms. Eileen Johnson inquired about naming a wing or a portion of a facility after a current teacher at a specific school that has served a significant amount of time in Georgetown County School District. Since then, additionally, several of us, including me, have fielded several questions and concerns regarding the process along with several suggestions. Our school district has been blessed and continues to be blessed with so many deserving individuals of this honor as well as recognition. I've asked Ms. Kibler to share with us tonight the current policy as information only as it refers to specific naming of facilities or different things within our district, including athletic fields, et cetera. Again, this is only information. Any discussion or questions regarding the policy certainly we'll field, but not a discussion for recommendations or suggestions of names because that, that, I'm sure that could go on and on and on forever. Ms. Kibler?
Thank you very much.
So Policy FDC Naming Schools and Facilities was issued in October of nineteen eighty-seven and it specifically says that schools and school facilities are named by the board. Schools may not be named for individuals. However, the board may name certain facilities such as gyms, fields, et cetera, with a school, within a school for individuals. I'm just sharing it as an information item.
I thought you were going to say something else, any discussion, any questions?
The key, I think the key that, that we want to emphasize and what Ms. Kibler is saying here is that this is done by the board. Certainly we'll be at the will of, of the chair to take steps or to assist, but we definitely wanted to put it out there in terms of public information, but more importantly, to what the board can do and should do.
Ms. Kibler, thank you very much. And there goes my next election. Now we have a legislative update by Ms. Kathy Anderson.
I don't have much, just a reminder. I don't have much. Just a reminder that in the first weekend in December, we'll be going to the Delegate Assembly in Charleston. And I know y'all have done your homework that I asked you at the last board meeting, right? That you've read the Delegate Assembly handbook, and you've got all the information.
Two meetings ago.
You read it twice?
No, I said...
It was two meetings ago?
Well, I did.
Okay. You know, I work with teenagers. I don't always remember dates. Anyway, but again, I'm gonna just emphasize that if you get a chance to look at it, these are the suggestions. I'm not gonna go through, because I think there's 35-something. We're not, we don't have time to do all that. But if you want to look at that, and if there's something on there, because I know not all of us are going to the Delegate Assembly, but we do have representatives there. So, if there's something that you want to discuss or for us to bring to the floor, then you need to let me know. And I'll send you out an email this week or next week, so you can all look at that and make sure that there's not something in here that is something that you don't agree with, or that sort of thing. So, okay. That's it.
Thank you very much, Ms. Kathy.
One more?
Now, we move to our action items. And our personnel list is first on the list. The administration recommends approval of our personnel list as presented. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposers? Thank you very much. The motion carries. Next, the Community Eligibility Provision of the School Lunch Act Resolution. The administration recommends approval of the Community Eligibility Provision of the School Lunch Act Resolution as presented. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposers? Thank you very much. The motion carries. And now, we're down to Procurement Code Review Committee, Dr. Gauss.
Thank you, Chair, and to our board members. Just as a reminder, the district's procurement code requires the establishment of a district procurement review panel. The function of this panel is to review appeals from decisions or determinations based on our district's procurement office, or specifically, in this case, through our CFO and Director of Procurement. Again, this is uncommon. Appeals are very uncommon, and the district has not needed to establish a panel in order to review. However, it is a requirement of the district's code. And bringing before us now, I would ask that our chair appoint, or by the board's decision, appoint a chair of the panel that needs to be a board member.
Thinking, I would like to nominate Ms. Fallon Boardner, if she would accept and that the board would approve. Is this something you'd be interested in?
I would certainly be honored for the opportunity.
Thank you. Did I make that motion? Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposer? Thank you very much.
And thank you for that. So, just as a record of this, while Ms. Boardner will now be the chair of this committee as needed, Mr. Moore, myself, and Ms. Johnson were deemed appropriate to appoint members. And that would be Mr. Aaron Reese, Mr. Ray Funny, and Ms. Kirby Coker-Milwood. We're awaiting confirmation of one more nominee, and we will bring that forth. But those are the names that we have at this time. Turn it back over to you, Chair.
Thank you very much, Dr. Gauss. Okay, so we're now at Board and Assistant Comments or Requests. Who wants to go first?
I'd like to say thank you for the Relay for Education. That was one of the most wonderful activities. The schools all that participated, the ones that participated, all of the teachers and the staff, it was everybody. And they were all walking together and laughing together and making tents, and it was, it was the most exciting time to see all of these folks sharing their love for what they do every day. So, I'd like to say thank you, Teacher Forum, teachers all together. You did an outstanding job. I saw the competitiveness. I saw the fun. I saw everything that made me happy to be a school person. And so, I'd like to say thank you. That was a wonderful activity.
I want to jump on that, too, because I was there, and dragged my poor husband also, who had a fantastic time also. But we got to see students speaking and, you know, representing their schools, and how proud these children are of their schools and their area. And again, the competition, I'm thinking next year, it's gonna be a lot bigger, because teachers were also very competitive. Principals are competitive. But it was a lot of fun, and it was a beautiful day. So, put that on your calendar for next year, too, that we get good weather. I also want to yell, you know, just to do a little shout-out to Georgetown Middle School. They did their fall production last week. It was the Real Housewives of Shakespeare. It was funny and silly, and some of those kids did a fantastic job of Shakespearean language. And, but anyway, it was a lot of fun, and once again, you know, supporting the arts. So, it was fun.
I have a comment to make about this P-card committee. Whether it's through the committee or some other vehicle, there have been some important questions that have been raised out in the community that we have not yet to answer. And one of those is, why are P-card expenditures are 400% higher than two counties that people out in the community have been looking at, Lexington and Richland 1? And the other question that's been raised is, why do we have 90 P-cards when the other two districts only have around 30? And I think those are important questions, and I think they need to be answered with data. Somebody needs to talk to Richland 1 and Lexington and find out why those differences exist. Now, they may be perfectly legitimate. Nobody's saying they aren't. But the fact that the questions have been raised and have not been answered, to me, is important. If we're looking for transparency, and we're looking for community support of how we spend money, how we put together a budget, I think we need to answer important questions. They're not trivial. And I can see an answer that would say, well, we checked with them, and actually, our total expenditures are actually the same. However, they buy most of their stuff using checks. We buy most of our stuff using P-cards. That would make perfect sense. But the fact that we haven't explained anything, to me, is an issue. And so, somehow, I would like to see those explanations with data, not just saying, well, it's probably this, or it's probably that, but specific data to answer the questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DeBoz. Just to, not to contest what you said, but the Procurement Code Committee is not a P-card committee. It's two different things. So, this is a Procurement Code Committee. But I did share some of that information with you all, but I'll wrap it back up and send it. And we'll also further address with some plans of action that we have put into place this week, actually.
Thank you.
I wanted to congratulate first Carvers Bay High School football team for the season that they're continuing. It's a fantastic situation. I didn't get to go to the Relay for Education, because I was in Aiken this past weekend, watching the cross-country teams compete in the state championship. Shout-out to Wilson Rutherford and Millie Johanning. Both of them were All-State, fantastic. William Martin came very, very close to that from Waukama as well. But just an exceptional season. There's been some adversity out there for some of those runners, and they continue to compete, just like I know Carvers Bay's going to this weekend. So, let's hope.
I would like to say that I'm extremely proud of the improvements that our district has done. And if my feet had to hurt in these shoes for anything, I'm glad it was for that extremely long line of children that were, you know, being awarded. Even though Mr. Moore said he felt tall next to me, I said, well, I'm still wearing heels. So, but they were worth it, and it was so wonderful to see as many students that came through that line as what did. And I think, you know, as a district and as a board, that we work, as we continue to work together and to form our plans and try to lead our district in the right direction, everything takes time. Nothing is immediate, and we all want it to be perfect. We want to have all of our schools go to excellent ratings, but that's going to be a gradual process. And as long as we are continuing to go in the upward trend, then we're on the right track. And eventually, and my goal, personally speaking, is that by the time my four years are up, that we have all of our schools in the average or higher. But I think it's possible for all of our students and all of our teachers. And again, I'd like to thank all the effort that goes behind the scenes to bring everyone and all the thousands of people and students together to make those changes. And, you know, there's just so much positive. But, and I would also like to thank the board for the nomination and for voting me and trusting me with the review committee. And hopefully, I won't ever have to be called into action. I hope that it stays that way. But I am honored that you considered me and that I was voted into that position, so thank you.
Okay. Just briefly, I certainly want to echo Fallon's goal by the end of her four years. Mine is up before hers is, so that's why my urgency is more than hers. But I want to say to Mr. DeBoz, and I'll say this right here, because I don't want the public to think that Dr. Gauss and her staff, they don't address our concerns or answer questions. They have been, information sent out to us about plans to cut down on P-cards that are out there. And I want to say this right here. I don't like to compare myself to somebody else. I want them to compare themselves to me. Let Lexington 1 and Dar... I can compare it to Georgetown, because we're doing great things here. I don't want them to think that they're doing so good, we have to figure out what they're doing. Let them figure out what we're doing, because you can see that clearly. When we work in the same direction, there can be growth. So, let's just focus on Georgetown. What worked best for Georgetown? And Dr. Gauss, I encourage you to continue to do what you're doing. You're sharing information out. We have to be willing to accept the answer and trust the answer that you guys have given us. So, thank you for your hard work. Thank your staff for all that they're doing. And like I said, I don't want us to get bogged down on certain aspects of the district's responsibility, but I want us to really focus in on the academics, because I can guarantee you, when all of us were campaigning to be a part of the school district, that is something that we said. We want to make sure these kids get that academic. We need to remember that and do what's necessary for us to support the district in making sure that is accomplished. Dr. Gauss?
Thank you, Chairman Moore. Thank you, members of the board. And thank you for that confidence in our team, as well as the extended team members who are here today. We don't take any of your comments lightly or your requests for items, so we'll continue to work towards providing that transparency, as well as the reassurance that we are working in an efficient and an effective manner. And we're fiscally, excuse me, responsible in the resources that are given. As you can see from tonight's presentations, we have to be even more fiscally responsible as we are losing money, but we still have higher expectations. So, we have to balance that out. Just in my comments, thank you, thank you, thank you to the members of Teacher Forum for Relay for Education. When the conversation was started on last year, and we worked towards starting it this year or having the actual event, you know, conversations were limited in terms of what is it? What are you gonna do? And, you know, getting the buy-in. But I definitely think the competitive nature of what we saw that day, I can imagine what it's gonna be on next year. But the important thing to remember is that it wasn't just about teamwork and building that camaraderie. We also raised significant amount of dollars for our teacher scholarship fund. That's through our Teacher Forum, that we are focusing on growing our own, and our students can earn this scholarship by majoring in education. So, we're looking forward to that. And thank you again, Teacher Forum members. And I may get in trouble, but I know Ms. Turner, Ms. Marshall, and Ms. Humowitz carry the load very significantly, and we thank them for that. Congratulations again to all those that were recognized on this afternoon in the EOCs, the end-of-course exams, and SC-ready. We did recognize teachers on last week, and I'll tell you that the comment I heard more often than not was, it's not about me, it's about the kids. I just have great students. And my comment simply was, it takes teaching and learning. It's not just one. We may have great students, but they're even better by the teaching that they receive. So, shout-out to those teachers as well. On last week, we had Veterans Day programs. We definitely saw some great action in our students exhibiting patriotism and respect for our veterans. And I specifically want to shout-out all of our bands and ROTCs and members of our CTE organizations that participated in the Veterans Day Parade in Georgetown, as well as Andrews, but the one specifically in Georgetown. We've really represented Team GCSD. So, thank you for that. Fall sports, as you said, Mr. Owen B., thank you to all those who had a great season. But we certainly want to cheer on the Bears as they continue and travel to Bamberg. And we congratulate the cross-country winners that were in every division. We had, I think, a 1A, a 2A, and 3A representation. So, that's in all of our high schools. Winter season is probably more known for basketball and wrestling, but for me, I think, and probably Ms. Anderson, winter season is more about the arts. This time of year, we will begin to hear of productions and different events coming forth as it's the holiday time. So, I encourage you all to watch your emails for dates of events and times, so that you can participate when you're able to. American Education Week is this week, so we salute not just teachers and administrators, but also our support staff, classified staff, bus drivers, cafeteria workers, everyone, office professionals that come together to make Team GCSD and make our public education system what it is. So, thank you for everything that you do, and we'll share more about that this week. And lastly, just as a recognition and a remembrance, we do remember Mr. Willing Waring, who's a former teacher and administrator of Andrews High School, was funeralized this past week. So, we definitely want to recognize former teachers and administrators, as well as current teachers and administrators.
I learned a lot from him. He was a good man.
Thank you very much. We're now entertaining...
Oh, one more thing. I'm sorry, I got caught up in that one. Dr. Melinda Mansfield, would you stand? She is here with her teacher cadets. Teacher cadets, please stand. Don't believe everything y'all heard tonight, as far as things we gotta work on. It's a perfect, perfect career. Y'all go into teaching, okay?
Please, please.
Nothing is wrong with it. Scores are 100%. You get the best salary, everything. Go into teaching. Don't hold me to that. Thank y'all. And we also recognize teaching fellows from CCU, Coastal Carolina University. We ask that you stand. I don't think it's appropriate, but I would say that y'all could exit and go sign contracts, but that may not be appropriate at this time.
There is back there.
But we have some in the back for you. Thank y'all for all you do, and best wishes in the field of education.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Again, thank everyone for being here tonight. Teacher cadets, don't get discouraged, because your job is, will be the most important job in this country. Remember that. And now, entertain a motion for executive session, please, for the matter of personnel discussion.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposers? Thank you very much for enunciating the executive session.
Did you work today?
I did.
Okay, we will now get a motion to come out of the executive session please.
So moved.
All in favor please say aye.
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 Okay, I believe there's no action that's appropriate for us to take so can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor please say aye.
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 We are now adjourned, thank you.